Hello, welcome to WFUZ TV. I'm Blair Castro and I'm here with Thomas Jenkins. Today we have a special guest, Mr. Tim Brown, who's running for a city council in Robertsdale. Mr. Brown, would you please tell us a little bit about what seat you're running for and when the election is? And just a little bit about your platform?
Well, first of all, I'm born and raised in Robertsdale. And in the city of Robertsdale, we have a mayor and five council seats. They're at-large seats. I'll be running for place four. The gentleman that was running, is going to be running one of the mayor's spots, is vacating that position, so I'll be running that position as well. We have two people that are on the council that are running for mayor as well as a fourth. So there'll be four people running for the mayor's position. I have been in Robertsdale most of my life. I have ran for city council in 2016. I did run for mayor in 2020 and wasn't successful. But it's kind of hard to run a campaign where there's an incumbent that's been there for so many years. The mayor and a few of the council people have actually been in office between 30 and 36 years.
Wow. Yes, we're seeing in Baldwin County, that seems to be the norm. There's generations of people that are here since the Bush senior era of politics and are still in office. And to me, that is a huge red flag, a sign that things need to change. So is there a rule right now that someone can't remain on city council and run for mayor? Do they have to resign or vacate their seat in order to run?
Correct. You can't be elected in two positions. You have to run for one. You have to declare. They'll start the taking of applications on June 10th. And I believe June the 24th is cutoff date to qualify for the elections.
So basically, this is a 90-day sprint for you from that time to the election day in August?
Correct. It's, I mean, it's, it's just going non-stop trying to get into knocking on as many doors as you can and meeting and greeting and, you know, we even go to the point of standing on the roadside, shaking hands and waving at folks and hanging signs and all. And it's spirited, but you know, the biggest reason that I run is because there's so many people that they'll constantly complain, say on Facebook, you'll see, you know, what's happening in Robertsdale. Our page, Robertsdale Rail Chat, they complain about things that are going on in the city. But yet, when it's time to take action to try to beat that, we had last election in 2020, there was over 6,000 registered voters in the city of Robertsdale. And there was only 800 to 900 people that voted in that election. That's the problem. Nobody will get to the polls and vote.
Yeah, that is a very low voter turnout. It surprises me, especially given, like you said, how much people get on and complain about things. And we've experienced that too, in terms of people really like to go online and voice all of these complaints and concerns, but they don't actually ever take action. It's very rare. And when you try to encourage people to get out and make a change, it seems to be a sticky thing, a hard thing to get people to latch on to. Why do you think that is?
I think it's a spur of the moment, they're mad thing. And as time goes on, they just feel that nothing is going to be done to fix or alleviate the problem. And therefore, you know, their complaints are falling on deaf ears. I know one of the biggest things that happened from 2020 to the 24 election is the state of Alabama enacted a law that stated that the council of mayor positions and any state election could not be handled in the same year as the presidential election. So thus, the city councils and the mayors here in Baldwin County and in Alabama, they got an additional year, so they were in office for five years instead of four this time.
What would you say would be the most urgent issue for Robertsdale to urge voters to go to the polls and vote for change?
There is two real specific things that are happening. The first one, the mayor and council, which there were two objections to this. They are trying to declare eminent domain on the Baldwin County fairgrounds. Now, the city of Robertsdale purchased the Baldwin County fairgrounds from the county for $2.2 million. And that just entailed the area where the horse arena and the actual Colosseum is. The other 40 acres that is around the Colosseum is owned by the Baldwin County Fair and Cattle Association. Well, the mayor has been wanting the properties for years as far as his master plan. And so they went into an executive session a couple of months ago. And they come out and they voted to go with eminent domain. The biggest problem we have with that is eminent domain goes with public use. Well, what happens every year in October, the fair, the public uses this land. So to me, it's just nothing but a land grab by the mayor. The mayor said that they offered $1.45 million to purchase that property. And the Baldwin County Fair and Cattle Association said no. And so what took place was the mayor was mad. But you know, honestly, what we really need to do is we need to come together as the council and the fair and cattle association, work out a gentleman's agreement. And if take the $1.45 million that'd been budgeted by the property and upgrade the property, help the fair and cattle association, and let's make this great for Baldwin County folks. You know, they used to have a rodeo. You know, the Baldwin County Fair and Cattle Association has handled this for over 73 years in the city of Robertsdale. And the rodeo's been part of it, but that disappeared two years ago. And so there's a lot of variances that are going on that actually, you know, people could work things out, but the mayor just, he wants what he wants. And he doesn't care what the citizens, you know, what they want. He has been in office for so long that he's forgotten who he is working for.
We've observed, just in our brief interactions with some of the county commission, that the ones that have been in the seats for decades have that air of being untouchable. I own this building, what I say goes and whatnot. And that does not serve the taxpaying voting public. And I don't understand, well, I do understand absolute power corrupts absolutely. And it just, there's, there's got to be some term limits, obviously, because there's just things not getting done for the majority of the people and what they actually need.
Correct. And the second subject that I want to talk about is the infrastructure for the city of Robertsdale. I applaud the city of Fairhope and Gulf Shores and Foley. They have put a moratorium on building. They've got to catch up with the infrastructure before they can build any more residents. The problem with the city of Robertsdale, we have dealt with an overflowing sewer system for over 20 years. We've been promised and promised, the mayor's promised and promised. Well, it took so long. Now, all of a sudden, it's election time. His face is everywhere on anything that's going on. And they are now working on upgrading the sewer system that's been needing this upgrade from a million gallons to 2 million gallons. And they should be finished with the project just before election time. And it's so amazing how that.
That's convenient. Going back to the fair and the fairgrounds, can you talk a little bit about what would happen to the fair and how that would change if eminent domain is claimed on that piece of property?
Well, what's going to take place is the mayor has said he wants to control and take over the fair. The Hankins, who have run the fair for many, many, many years, they have gotten all kinds of awards from different organizations that basically, they do a fantastic job. Well, you're going to take that and put somebody in charge of the fair that has no experience whatsoever. And the city's going to take it over. You know, what gets me is when the city purchases this fairgrounds or the Colosseum and all for $2.2 million, the county, and this was a 20-year agreement with the county. Well, the county reimburses the city of Robertsdale $110,000 every year for the fair. So if you take 20, multiply times $110,000, you get $2.2 million. Guess what? Why didn't the county just sign the Colosseum over to the city of Robertsdale? Instead of the city of Robertsdale having to take out a loan that they pay over $1,000 a month to pay or over $10,000 a month to pay? It's just unbelievable, the fraud, waste and abuse that happens in the city of Robertsdale.
I'm actually really shocked. I had no idea any of this was happening in Robertsdale. And we've been trying to learn more about what's going on in other areas and towns and cities in Baldwin County. And I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention, because these are really specific things. You are hitting the nail on the head for what is happening in our own backyard that nobody is paying attention or talking about, or some people are. But generally, that's getting overlooked by national issues or by, you know, broader state things happening, which do affect us as well. But this is, this is things that really do affect every resident in the city.
Yes, it does. And you know, Robertsdale's got some fantastic people. They, you know, they're trying to revitalize downtown. You know, we have an amphitheater that was supposed to have been built by now, but it hasn't been finished yet. They got grants for that. You know, we need a revitalization of downtown. We need to give some tax incentives and some breaks on something to let our, the people that own these businesses and stuff, help refurbish them. We had a business in Robertsdale and it just sit there. It used to be a little Stalin Pharmacy building. Well, the balloon company that bought this building and has their business there, they have upgraded the outside, bricked it up, made it look beautiful. And we need to give incentives to all the business owners to do this, to make that downtown more accessible. We've got to come up with parking. There, at the last planning commission, there was a, in the old Hub City Floors building, they wanted to put a wedding venue in there. Well, one of the biggest things is parking. So we've got to work with somewhere to do a downtown parking area. There is land there that the city owns that could be used to basically build parking and build that infrastructure up. You know, at the last council meeting, we had a young man that went in front of the council. He was a high school senior. Robertsdale used to have basketball goals. They used to have things for kids to do. We had a swimming pool. And there was a very misfortunate happening a long time ago at the swimming pool that caused a young lady, a young girl at the time, she accidentally set down on one of the drains in the kiddie pool and it sucked her intestines out. So the employee was in a rush and basically it happened. And from that point forward, you know, they wanted to stay away from it. Well, the high school has now a swim team. Our high school swim team has to go either to Fairhope or Foley or Daphne, YMCA, in order to be at a home team for their meetings. It's time to buckle up and support Robertsdale High School in all their endeavors, all their sports, football programs. You know, we've been, there's been talk about a high school football stadium being built on these school grounds on fairground room. And the football stadium that we have now, I played in it back in 1985, 84. I mean, and back in 1979, when my brother graduated, he played in the same football stadium. So we see, everybody sees the campuses like Daphne and Fairhope. Well, which Fairhope has their own, but Daphne, they have their on-campus football stadium. And you know, Foley's got this big structure of the indoor facility that they can work out and practice in. And honestly, it needs to go countywide. Taxes need to be spent on our kids. The kids are the future. You know, we can do whatever we can, but we have got to take care of these kids and these young adults that are growing up and get something, you know, a bowling alley, you know, something in the city, a skating rink, something that brings a positive to the city. And like getting back to the basketball goals, the young man was like, you know, why can't we have basketball goals? And the answer from the mayor was, well, we're going to do a study. We'll do a study. Guess what? The mayor was the one that had the basketball goal removed, because he didn't want gaming activity happening at the basketball.
Oh my gosh.
This is a true statement. It come out of his mouth, I can guarantee.
Wow.
That's ridiculous.
How do you, how do you rate the emergency services, infrastructure, fire, police, EMT for Robertsdale?
Robertsdale has a fantastic public safety department. Now, back when 2016, when I ran for city council, we have an all-volunteer fire department. Well, my idea was we need to compensate these volunteers. And so I proposed, we pay them $10 per call. You know, it's a little something to show thank you to them. And so that was, I was told that that would never work. We couldn't do that. We couldn't do that. Well, guess what they passed just before the mayor's election in 2022? A $10 per call fee that they paid to the volunteer firemen. My idea and the mayor stole it.
So Blair's familiar with having ideas stolen?
Way too often for comfort.
Our police department, they do a great job. And if you don't know, in the city of Robertsdale, it's considered the hub city. In the city of Robertsdale, we have the sheriff's department's investigative division. We have their patrol division, which is on top of the Regent's Bank building. We have the state troopers and the Alabama Bureau of Investigations just south of Robertsdale in Somerville in a little strip mall. And basically, you've got our police force in Robertsdale. So if you want to try to commit a crime in the city of Robertsdale, especially during the day, and bring back an old story from a little while ago, we had a gentleman rob the PNC bank in Robertsdale. Parked his car behind swept tire, walked over, dressed as a pest control person. And they thought it was a pest control guy coming in to do the service. Well, needless to say, he robbed the bank. They followed him, his money trail back to the vehicle parked behind, swept tire. I mean, within two minutes flat, there was, there was police officers, sheriff deputies. They were on PNC bank. So don't do anything illegal in the city of Robertsdale. You're going to get caught.
That one wasn't too bright.
And they knew exactly, I mean, they had his tag number, because a swept tire had a camera system. And they had his tag. They had a picture of him with money and everything. They knew exactly. And within 10 minutes, they had him under arrest.
That's good. There's so many municipalities that do not understand the importance of emergency service infrastructure. If you want that business growth that everybody wants for their town, everybody wants growth and more money and input into their community. But if they overlook certain things like basic emergency services, then they're, in my opinion, doomed to fail.
Exactly. You know, infrastructure is the biggest thing that we've got to get under control. You know, the city of Robertsdale owns their own utility department. They own a water department. They, as far as gas, they purchase that from Riviera Utilities, but they have their own gas department. And I mean, the electrical department, man, if you have an outage, they are there. Even through major storms and stuff, they're out there getting the power back on. So I applaud every one of our city employees. They work very hard at what they do.
I am always impressed with towns like Robertsdale and Somerville and Alberta, Lillian, like these little towns that in a way are time capsules. They're kind of, in some ways, a little capsule of the past. And I love that historic part of it. But exactly like you said, Foley was the same way. I see Foley kind of taking a good example there in preserving the historic, but allowing for growth and allowing for those business incentives. And that's now become something where their schools and everything, you're getting more money into the little towns. They're not getting overlooked for the larger places in Baldwin County. I'd love to see that happen for Robertsdale. There seems to be so much potential there. And kids in Robertsdale are just as deserving of kids in Fairhope, of good amenities and things to do. Like, there's no reason that money shouldn't be coming into this city, just like it's coming into all the other somewhat larger cities in Baldwin County.
That's right. You know, the biggest thing about the city of Robertsdale, we've been told by the mayor that we're a bedroom community. Meaning sleepy town, the older generations there, they don't want to be bothered, you know. But the problem is, is our kids have to go somewhere else spending money to, you know, have a good time, to find things to do, you know, other than sit in the parking lot at Walmart. And park their trucks there. And, you know, we used to, before Walmart was even around, you know, when I was growing up, we used to sit at the old Hammond supermarket, which Bob's Discount is at now. And so there's a lot of history in Robertsdale. I live right close to where the train used to come through. And it's, it's just amazing the history that is there. But you know, times have to change and I understand that. And we really need people just to get in and get involved. That's the biggest part of it.
If you don't retain young people and we don't have new generations in Robertsdale, then like what happens? The legacy dies. So yeah, exactly like you said, while I understand preserving everything and keeping that history in some ways, you also have to really have incentive to keep the young people here too, because then it's just, the bedroom town goes honestly to like a casket town. You don't want that to happen. Like you want, you need the young people and young families and people to be like, you know what? I loved growing up in Robertsdale. I want to stay there. Not, I'm going to move to Fairhope or I'm going to move, you know, to Montgomery or something. You kind of want, you want to retain people too, instead of necessarily always growing and getting, I wouldn't even think about pulling people in at this point, when you don't have the infrastructure to match, but retaining the people that are here so that they don't have to leave. That's critical.
Well, I think the hard pill to swallow for the older generation is that they're getting the growth that the candidates that they've kept in for the last 35 years have been pushing for in Baldwin County. And that's of course going to trickle up directly from the beach. Correct me if I'm wrong, Robertsdale is home of the Buc-Ee's.
Well, actually, actually, Buc-Ee's was incorporated into the city of Locksley.
Locksley, okay.
Correct. It was that whole area. See, Robertsdale's, the 36567 zip code goes all the way past I-10 at Wilcox exit, all the way up to County Road 112, goes all the way to Florida lines. And that whole area, I mean, Robertsdale is huge if you look at it with the 36567 area. Or zip code, I'm sorry. But the, just on the city, it's cookie cuttered in the city of Robertsdale. It, you know, what we need to do is we need to basically go in, because there are people that are in, say for instance, some business owners, they live outside the city limits, but they have a business on the inside of the city limits. And their biggest complaint is, we can't have a voice of what's going on. And some of them lived, I mean, just right outside the city limits, because of the way the jurisdictions are cut for our voting and the city limits.
What would you suggest to do in order to fix that, so those people have a vote? Would you want to redraw the, kind of the lines a little bit? Or is there a way where you can include people who own a business as well as a residence in terms of some of these planning and zoning decisions?
What's going to have to happen is first of all, the city is going, and council people, the city is going to have to go out and, and reach the citizens that live in these areas like that. They're going to have to ask them, and they're going to have to agree to come into the incorporated area of Robertsdale. You know, all they have to do is come into a city council meeting, get on the agenda, and basically, you know, ask the council to bring them in. Now, there'll be a feasibility study and make sure that everything's set up. But you know, at one time, it should be a big, just a big box. And I know for, if you go, say for instance, you take County Road or Highway 90 and you turn on County Road 71, there's an Exxon station, which is now Chevron, on the corner. And if you go north, the very first road you come to is Hewitt Street. Well, if you take a right on Hewitt Street, everybody that lives to the north of Hewitt Street is outside the city limits. Everybody that lives in the south is in. But if you come back out to 71, you would think that would be the cutoff for Hewitt Street. But no, you go up to Kekon Lane and they've been incorporated into the city. So they can, they get to city services as well. So it's just cut all over the place and it needs to be straightened out.
That makes sense.
What, what steps do you take? Who do you even go to to even get that ball rolling?
I would say you would need to submit an applicant or submit a request to the city. Send it to Shannon. She's the city clerk. And from there, they'll pass it around and send it to where it needs to go. And ultimately, it'll go to the mayor's house and then it will get put on the council agenda. Then, you know, you can go to zoning and planning and send your information into there and have them put it in. You know, that's to get the ball started. You know, that's, I mean, you got to do something if you want to be able to vote and have a right to say what's going on in the city.
That's what I think a lot of people struggle with as far as local politics goes. Like, they feel they want to change. They, they feel like they need to change in something, but they don't know how they can be proactive as an individual besides just putting a check on a ballot to, to put things into motion, like going to meetings and having their voice heard on issues and how to file paperwork to have legislation and things like that.
Correct. Well, you know, they could also go to their neighbors and get a petition started, you know. You know, do, do the lab work, you know. We can only do so much. If you're, if you are just so inanimate that you want this done, go to your neighbors, get a petition started. Hey, we want a petition started to get moved into or be annexed into the city. And you know, that's another way to start.
I love this discussion, by the way. This is good stuff that I really appreciate. Civic engagement is something I'm really passionate about. And I really want to encourage people to get out there and pay attention to all of this that we're talking about. It is happening right here in Baldwin County. It's happening in Skimbia County. You were talking about feasibility studies. That kind of, something went off for me. When I worked in Skimbia County, there is a large, like park-type facility. It's got a playground and stuff, but there is a actual building there too, where there was events and stuff for the community in a, you know, more impoverished area of town on the west side of Pensacola. And for years, it sat there unoccupied. And every time we brought it forth to the county commission, they would say, we need to do a feasibility study on the roof, because something's wrong with the roof. So the building is totally fine. And then I was like, well, something's wrong with the roof, because it's been sitting there for like six years. No one's done anything. And it's got termites. You can look up and see the termites. Like, can we just fix the roof? But before they would even get quotes to fix the roof, they want to study the roof to learn more about it. Like, the study thing always is an extra $10,000, $20,000 of taxpayer money for something that they don't even, they just throw out the window like half the time and proceed with whatever they were going to do anyways. So why all these hoops and studies and things? Why not take action? And it's funny, because exactly like you said, they will take action when their election is up. And they're finally like, we need to do something to get people to think we've been working this whole time.
And you know, what's so bad is for the last three, three and a half, four years, we have not seen the mayor of the city of Robertsdale on any pages doing anything. But all of a sudden now, as of January, he's in the high school. His picture is being taken, passing out coins and, you know, doing everything to, to campaign, per se. And you know, I had somebody tell me the other day, they called the, the city hall and asked, it must be election time, because this is the first time we've seen the mayor do anything. And that's the problem.
That is a problem.
Definitely. Switching gears slightly, I would love to hear more about your background and why you believe you are the most qualified candidate for the city council seat. And tell me a little bit about your experience in leadership and in life.
Okay. Well, first of all, I have been a business, well, I own two businesses. I have an entertainment company and I did own a pest control company. I had 12 employees that worked for me at the time when I owned the pest control company. I was offered a very nice deal from a company to come in and, and take that. And so I was like, okay, but we can do that as well. Like I said, I have run for council before. I am the district eight this year. I'm the district eight commander for the VFW. I'm also the quartermaster of the VFW in Fairhope, Post 5660. I have been in leadership a lot. I mean, I just, I just want to help folks. I have a giver's heart and I feel that, you know, if I'm just given a chance, you know, first of all, in, at the city council meetings in Robertsdale, they pass between $100,000 and $600,000 worth of bills every two weeks of their meetings. And in the last 20 years, there's only been three items that have been questioned. So it's time for, I feel that I can get in, we need to start looking at these bills, looking at these budgets and making sure that we're spending the tax dollars money, the taxpayers' money properly and going to help the city. And I have a business background with, with my businesses. And so I just feel that I could be a very well-qualified asset for the voters of Robertsdale.
Would you almost suggest an audit on some of those past city expenditures? Because that is extremely low. Only three items really being questioned in the past, like decades. That seems strange. Is there a reason people don't really look into the finances? Do they, are they just not paying attention? Is there a small number of people there?
Well, that's, that's one of the keys there is people, you know, first of all, they have a city council meeting on the first Monday of the month. They have a workshop at 5:00 and then the council meeting at 6:00. Then the next meeting they have is the third Monday of the month and it's at 8:00 AM, when nobody can go, because the average person in the city of Robertsdale works for a living. So they cannot attend these meetings. So they cannot attend these meetings. And if you are a citizen of Robertsdale and you want to see the minutes of the meeting and the, and the, and the bills that are being paid, contact Shannon at city hall and she will put you on the email list. That's, you know, everybody that is involved with it, they have contacted and she sends it out. She sends it out just usually the Friday before the meeting on Monday. And it lays out all the bills. It gives you the minutes of the meeting and, but it, it's hid. You know, the mayor usually gets things passed at that eight o'clock meeting that, that people don't know about until it's too late.
Is there a requirement with these city meetings, especially in Robertsdale, um, since that is your area, that they be live streamed or that the minutes be published online? Or is there a website where we can go look at like past meeting agendas?
Okay. You can go on the city of Robertsdale's website. The, it prior to, uh, August of 2020, there was nothing on the website. They would not publish them. And so there was a fuss caused after the last election. But if I'm not mistaken, there was a bill that was passed. I've, I've been told that it was a bill passed by, uh, uh, the legislature that if you have an open forum meeting, like a public meeting, uh, you know, your planning commission, your council meeting, it is required to be live streamed or sent out via, um, social media, but basically they have to live stream those kind of meetings. And so that's been the problem with Robertsdale. Everybody's been kept in the dark for so long because one, they, they can't go to the meetings or, or, you know, we don't know if they just don't want to go to the meetings, but we need people to get involved.
Yeah, absolutely. That is, um, a problem we've seen in Baldwin County in general, not so much on a city level, but definitely at a county level, that obtaining records and seeing minutes, seeing agendas, seeing budgets, all of that, it is available, but it's like such a task and a strenuous task to get that, to get our own court records or police reports or anything we've experienced has been jumping through a million hurdles. And I understand people just getting frustrated with it and being like, whatever, I don't care. Though, uh, some people have to go jump through hurdles or nothing is ever going to change.
Hank, you're right. I mean, uh, times have got to change. Voters have got to start standing up and, and speaking, you know? Get up in those council meetings. You know, one of the, one of the things that they do for our council meeting is you are supposed to be called. If you want to get on the agenda, you're supposed to call and be asked to be put on the agenda. And it gives the chance for the mayor and the council to get some background information before they have the council meeting. But if you've got questions that they don't want to answer, wait till the end of the meeting because they have to open the forum up to the public for public comment. That's what I did several times during running in the last election. I would wait till the end and then stand up and ask questions. That way you find out the real ones because they haven't had time to discuss it amongst themselves and give you an answer.
Are the people in Robertsdale, the staff, I would say, good at responding to emails and responding to constituents?
Yes, they are.
Okay. It's not like that at the county. So I'm glad to hear it is in, in city of Robertsdale. Um, how, let us remind people again, how they can get involved and how can they follow you in particular? And when is the election? What's the actual voting date?
Okay. Voting date is actually August the 26th. The polls will be held at the PZK hall in Robertsdale. They open up at seven and they close at 7:00 PM. Uh, you can find me on Facebook. I've got, uh, Robertsdale or Tim Brown for Robertsdale City Council Place Four. That's my page there. We also once again have a, uh, page called Robertsdale Real Chat. You know, uh, some of the other pages that we have, the what's happening, what's happening in Robertsdale. They like to basically censor their pages. Robertsdale Real Chat doesn't. We let you get on there and speak your mind because you, you know, you've got to have a way to express yourself. You know, we ask you no profanity. That's one of our biggest things is no profanity. But if you have a problem and legitimate complaint, bring it out. Because our page is now, we're, uh, we started out with about 40 people. We're over 282 now that have joined it. They have found out that, uh, you know, hey, our voice can be heard. And that, that's, that's the problem. But that's how you can reach us. Uh, you can find me, you know, just under Tim Brown on Facebook. And then of course we'll be getting out in the neighborhoods. Uh, June 10th is when you actually can, you have to declare on June 10th. That's when you start placing your signs for your campaign and everything. So that's why you really haven't seen any campaign signs put out till you physically sign the dotted line, pay your dues fees. Then once you've qualified, you can start putting your sign.
Yeah. Awesome. Well, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I appreciate y'all letting me come on to see. This is fantastic. I, you know, uh, there was, I, I found this because, uh, you actually put on there that you would like to meet and greet some other folks and help out with campaigns and, and I think it's great. I mean, if there's anybody out there that, you know, please contact them and, and get in front of the camera and talk to people. That's the only way it's going to go. Cause you know, there's a lot of rumors out there. Rumors spread like wildfire. But the problem is the truth is actually better than the rumor. And, and before it could come out, you've got to actually go to the person and say, look, I've heard this. Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming in. Again, this is Tim Brown, candidate for Robertsdale City Council Place Four. The vote is August 26th and we hope that you get out and vote. Thank you for joining us and get out there and make a difference.